Okay, time to 6:45, call me in the order. First order is previous meeting, May 7th, 2019. Page of board.
Motion to the first.
Second. Any questions, comments, corrections, amendments? You none, or favorite?
Aye.
Go.
I understand.
Which is, I'm free, public comments, members, please. Public like to comment anything you need. Okay. You none?
I have a public comment. I would like to publicly thank Dave Doherty for keeping this board and other members of our district. And then FAU informs of his work and work with other representatives in the Education Committee, the House of Education Committee. And I would just like to take a moment to remind my colleagues that we should refrain from replying all to emails because that can be seen as a quorum when we're all on there in an open meeting without rubber notice because on April 27th, 2017, there was an email sent by one of my colleagues that said, "Hi, Dave, same school and update, been to on the school board, April is the major piece of work," which that we had. I just want to make sure for transparency, since we were all in the email, that it is public knowledge. And that we just try to make a better practice of being aware of what might come. Thank you.
No one else? Okay. Three meeting, attend to agree. Stand where we are.
Yep, you have three consent items. Couple of informational and under non-public, we will need to go in under small letter B and small letter C.
Chris Lee, your issue is handled.
So I would like to introduce the students, Tim Herbert and Amy Parkinson. They're going to present a little bit on what we're working towards the 2021 school year.
Hi, so we're just going to present some of the topics that we're moving forward with, and we're looking at standing for American Academy, called Innovation Academy. So in general, we're going to email out the presentation for you guys, if you have them. But I did make sure it was all hyperlink to some of the research and also some different places in the slides within, so we're not going to like speed through all the slides to you guys. Generally, we're going to talk about current situation, what our proposal is, a little bit of the pedagogy behind it, next step, and then what we're calling Wave One, which is first. Do you want to?
Yeah, sure. So currently, I mean, PA has a lot of great programs going on. We have some traditional education instructional strategy occurring. We have some, as we saw in our greenhouse, some diverse learning opportunities. So currently, what we're trying to do is expand on that. And what we did as a team came together and discussed what our current situation was and what we started to need here. While we continue to increase the regular Amberberry Academy, we are looking for new opportunities for students to drive the learning inquiry-based collaborating, you know, more than just 21st century skills. Developing those skills will make them competitive when they leave here in, you know, New Hampshire job market, career opportunities, as well as college, et cetera.
Right, because currently, like you just mentioned, we have some programs already in place and some pieces of programs in place. So this year, we kickstarted a humanities, there's an American Studies and US History course. So we committed courses, team taught, two teachers, one social studies, one English. Put those kids in there, it's really successful. It's much more project-based, inquiry-based, it's given a lot more choice and a lot more authentic assessment within the system, but there's still meeting the requirements of the curriculum for both that English and social studies class. Also, the film studies class, also inquiry-based, based, student-driven, lots of projects. Amidst science, there's diversity of life.
Diversity of life, we saw some of that stuff going on in the greenhouse. We coupled diversity of life with some of our valley farm projects, as well as the farm going on in there, the fish that will be living in there. And we're also working with the Maryland Conservation District to develop a seed library. They want, they're developing that for concrete. We'd like to develop one in Amberberry Academy and our students as we continue to utilize the greenhouse. In addition to that, we've also got natural wildlife, we got native species that are considered not necessarily endangered, but at-risk groups of native species and plants. And Gray Whitmore, our diversity of life instructor, is currently growing some of those with the students to reintroduce into our natural wildlife, the wildlife around here with New Hampshire Wildlife Foundation, so.
And then, I'm kind of on the way to American, the Amazon Future Engineer Program. It is a new program we're kickstarting, we've been meeting with them, we got, we got accepted into the program, we got accepted into this program under Joe Macinio, he really went for it. And so next year, we'll have the opportunity to start looking at micro-credentialing kids in different topics, skills that they can take to their businesses, like you'll have a certificate showing you can do this particular coding program, et cetera, and expanding on that. And so what we noticed when we were looking at all our programs, looking at what was going on, is that we have a lot of things in isolation, but we would like to really start looking at how can we build a program for our kids and making sure that they are all going to be able to access it. So we're looking at the creation of Innovation Academy. It's going to be kickstarted in the 2021 school year. We started some of the research beginning of the year, we've done some work to follow up to the timeline. And we really wanted to not just dive right in, kickstart saying, "Hey, guess what? All you, you're doing this now." We wanted to do it appropriately and we wanted to really build the strength of the program up before we kickstarted it.
A lot of the stuff that's coming out of Innovation Academy and ideas, it's really teacher, teachers and as well as parents and students spoken up about, you know, what about STEAMs, STEM, et cetera. Well, in addition to that, we'd like to get, as we take it to the next step, we're not locking into one model, but where else, we have these teachers who have good fundamentals, you know, skills, instructional skills in STEAM, et cetera. However, we want to, we want to take them together as a team to create just a unique learning experience for students as a whole across all grade. And we think that, we feel that this is, you know, really important, beneficial, but the teachers are really driving the creation of this. So that's an important thing. It's, so far, it's got a lot of speed and interest, but it's been because it's really teachers saying, "This is the need we have and we want to address it." So it's got, it's a lot of support coming from the staff.
We really want to focus on the theme of being inquiry-based, in being, having seen what, and authentic assessment. They can't take the skills out from here and walk to the point of giving them skills. So this particular group really is going to focus now on that at the end. And so this is where the hyperlink starts, we want to look at more of the stuff. Reasons why we're doing it, some of the areas, skill areas that businesses and employers have told us they want, so they want, we now have the work setting practices that our kids are graded on within our, like, their actual grade report. So collaboration, communication, creative design, et cetera, kind of expands on that idea. Looking at collaboration, innovation, not just enough to do it to come up with new kids, data-driven engagement. It also focuses, it mirrors a lot of what their acting faculty need to do with the new S U requirements as well. So we're kind of tackling that. Um, STEAM and STEM, professional fields continue to grow and they're looking, but at the same time, a lot of the numbers are staying stagnant, especially for young women entering the field. So looking at how we can actually grow those things. But we did want to limit the program to STEAM and STEM because sometimes managers get left out, sometimes somebody other, like the arts, get left out in STEM, well, you know, they're in there, it's a big step, augment, highlight what they can do. I mean, we can see the potential for some really great civic servants coming from this program.
And one of those hyperlinks you can, that you, that I don't bring you in NHPR right now, this stream, if anybody follows that, has a really in-depth study in New Hampshire workforce and the decline in the needs and skilled needs of workers. So some of, this just mirrors what we're trying to do and trying to enact an approach at the school to address some of those needs in our administration.
There is demand from our local citizens. We, you know, met a lot of parents that are what we were going through and doing the eighth grade vacation night, and we had a couple of parents that into this, say, "Hey, what about STEAM, what about these kind of programs? What are you doing?" This is part of a way to address that. Also, we've, like, we've seen, like, research has shown that there's a good spillover effect if you have a program with a really strong central gate, that's all, seem like inquiry-based education, it's still so important to some of the other courses. We are working with White Mountain Regional High School, and that was one of the first things they saw, within a year, they started seeing spillover. What will be interesting about us, we already have pockets of this within the building to see how that impacts the spillover and how it grows. That one, because we'll go back, it's just what I think for innovation, pretty much, the couple of questions that they're interested in learning about, we give them the support to do the research, they're really kind of kind of support, we serve as mentors and coaches. The students are going to present what they've learned to the group, really sharing it, and then they go back and reflect on what they did. So this is general base, and like, there's more like, "What the heck is inquiry-based learning" articles and the nice like overview like this. The topic, what other things they can do. Um, but logistically, so what are we doing? So we're looking at about 30 to 40 kids in the first year's room, and they promote wide range, across all abilities and across all ages coming into working. We already have support to the program running, we're integrating them in as students be fit and they choose them, things like the fishing game, the valley farm, E O L, our Amazon program. And we have five teachers who were selected maybe in the first wave, a little bit more about how that happened, but they cover all the core concepts of English, social studies, math, science, and one from exceptional services, really specialized. And they would start, we wanted to be really conscientious about working within the PBA as well, and we did figure out a schedule for this, like how we can do that and accomplish those functions. Program looking placed at Amberberry Academy within our existing rooms. And we're working currently with Larry Meyer as a consultant and the White Mountain Regional High School as part of a cohort. They've been newly fortunate, they've set a $250,000 bar grant for continuing on their program, and we're going to be working with them on some of that stuff.
And another cool thing about working with Larry Meyer, being part of this cohort, we have schools in Texas, Arizona, that he's also working with that are part of this cohort cohort, and we will do like team meetings, cohort meetings, where they'll be Skyping in and be sharing their experiences, they're a couple of years into their program, so we can learn from some of the struggles, pitfalls they've had and, you know, take down in consideration and look at our current structures and resources and how to, you know, best fit, and we can maneuver it to make it more successful and on. So it's great to have these professional meeting, you know, consultants as well.
And we're currently not administrators, but we're working closely with Professor Scott as well, the FAU. He had a program similar to, that he went through in Manhattan.
And West High School in Manchester. It's the first team program in St. New Hampshire, huge, huge to do, they kind of converted West High School into a team school, so. If you look on plenty of articles about what transition they went through there, you can look that up and read, so he's a great resource for our team.
So Wave One teacher, and we know that there's a good amount of buy-in because it would require a scheduling for teachers, the teacher wouldn't necessarily get to teach those favorite classes that they've all been taught. But we did have, about, we had 18.6% of the faculty apply to be in the first wave of teachers, which we were not anticipating that many teachers at all. What we did is take five, so we had a continuum across the course, we did want to make sure we had exceptional services, case managers are in there, just in case need her. She also is phenomenal and works in a project-based system already, she's got the scale.
She used to run that bakery program, and this program would begin to reincorporate that resource we have down there as well.
And we talked with the other remaining teachers, and they all are really involved in Wave Two and the potential for doing a bucket. So a bucket is a kind of feature, the same type of instructional model, not just for the kids in Innovation Academy, also for the ones in the rest of the school.
And essentially, there's a lot of best practices that will happen in this Innovation Academy, student personalized, you know, driven learning, and these are some strategies that we'd like to see more in the pool who are at school. So we have our pilot group of five teachers who are really going to do in-depth training and try and adapt their instruction completely to this model, while these other teachers that did not necessarily get selected for the, you know, pilot model, we're inviting them to the professional development because we do want to see it spill over into the every classroom, maybe not completely to the amount that we're doing with the Innovation Academy, but some components of project-based student-driven learning.
And so the teachers being selected, like, in any given week, you could go into their classroom and see parts of this already running in their classroom. So that was part of, like, really sets them apart. We had a meeting with them last week, it was amazing to see them just go. They were great, they had a great idea, really working on that vision and mission statement and what Innovation Academy practice would look like. So good start to that. Next up, our Wave One group is going to be meeting with administration and Larry Meyer on June 16th and 17th, so the first Monday, Tuesday after we get out of school for all day training, and then we're going to meet again in August. During the time, they're working on summer curriculum writing, we're going to assume what needed, we're also going to work on budget and facilities, looking at what we are going to need for the program in the future. Our, our goal is to not demand pretty much, Larry has been really great about helping us with the grant, and it's part of, like, his contact to work and ask what they can.
And this is reallocating resources we already have. We already have a science position, the demands of science position, now we'd see if we treat that position to be an inquiry-based, what, you know, can we pull some students from traditional science classes over here, therefore pulling that resource potentially moves budget and plan for just science to Innovation Science. So still addressing our need, our safe standards, et cetera, by trying to have minimal impact on, you know, any budget increase, et cetera.
And community partner outreach, we've already started working on some of that. We have two connections already, continuing on with that part of it because this is a community demand, and we wanted to address that and look it down for it. Timeline, what's up there? We put the timeline up there, is that there, you guys can look there. Pretty much, we started back in December with working in the group, going to visit the other school, White Mountain, coming back, all the weekends, we've been doing, pretty far, we're actually like, we're already to the last block over here, to our last professional development day with them. So we're doing pretty well on our timeline. We, but we've actually structured, we started in the recommendation of Chris and Larry that we do this, that we structure an entire timeline, so they're in, it's been like three years. We targeted goals, and somewhere we've met all of them. So somewhere, somewhere like that, community, budget, schedule is possible for that part. We want them to look at the schedule and think creative in that outreach. And then all the way through, you know, spring of 2021, where we go back to like reflections on year one, we want to mirror as much as we can with the adult, like, what you're doing. Before we do questions, if you have one of them, just reference page, I'll fill it over if you want. And two of them are like both large.
And this will be shared with all of them.
Question?
Go for it.
What's the, you talked about diversity of teachers, what's the target audience as far as the students? Is this something that's, they're going to pilot with the general audience, is it something that's kind of an enrichment thing for the higher-level kids, is it a mix?
It's, we're going to put in a program and study, students, any student can enroll in it, and when they come in there, it's student-driven. So my way, I, in my interview question with my science teacher, I said, "If you're collaborating with, you know, an English teacher, how do you differentiate those students who use honors to AP level versus the students who do a college prep level or just doing, you know, or applying level?" And he's like, "Well, you know, general science, like, teach the vocabulary, et cetera, et cetera, get them to do a formal report and, you know, meet all those standards." But, you know, honors, AP, there's, you know, pure edited journals out there that I can have a student submit what they did in the class to, and, you know, they have to meet the grammar, et cetera, the writing style for that audience, and that would be a great collaboration with the teachers. So it's really, we're looking, same classroom, working on similar projects, but what their end result and what they want to gain from that experience is driven by them, well, it's the.
So it's more, it's not so much like a certain level of competency of grade, it's more of a certain level of improvement over the year in whatever's going to matter.
Right? Mentioned that it's starting with between 13 and 40 students, with that children number of students we fly, did you go through some selection process?
No.
Select students and, you know, include some, exclude others, just kind of wondering.
That's the targeting goal for the first year. And we did not open it up to students yet. We started talking to a couple of students, like I've mentioned it a few times, that's really cool, I watched it looking graduating, I'm sorry. But, you know, we kind of talked conversations, it's the goal, the first 30, 40. And so we wanted to have a better, like, team and structure before we put it into the program, so that students can share with them next year.
And, oh, sorry. And also, when we're, we don't, we don't know exactly what the draw is going to be, but we also know, we don't want to completely pull a science teacher who may be teaching physical science, the biology, and have that be, call them over here and say, "You're doing Innovation Academy, open that enrollment," and all of a sudden, we have a need for that person there. So we're easing our way into it. As time goes on, these teachers will begin in the Innovation Academy in 2021, teaching some innovation classes, but still some of the traditional classes. As time goes on, we will phase them in potentially, if the demand's there, to offer more of the innovation classroom style. And then, then we'll know if we can completely, I guess, broaden the tier to pay fall, you know, in that situation. And, and the idea of keeping that open enrollment, and if the students aren't rolling, if we get those 40 students, those 40 students would have been taking a traditional class. So we know we can reallocate that resource. And as time goes on, you know, the more demand there is for that, that would determine the level, how many innovation courses the teacher's teaching, how many more teachers we bring in, Wave Two gets that to there. So that had a lot to do with why we're saying 30 to 40, except to not, you know, pull on a resource too much.
Okay, so it's 30 to 40 students in the 2021 school year, not the upcoming school year.
Correct, no students in the next year. The next school year is strictly professional development for the teachers and curriculum instruction and design and instruction on inquiry-based learning, that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Others?
Can I read? I know things could change between now and when you began accepting students, but today, which is when I'm asking, what is the plan if you have more than 40 students interested that first year? Will it be a lottery? Will there be some sort of criteria? Is there a plan today on how you would handle that?
So, and so in a plan, yeah, so informally, yes, we also have the ability, we did have, because we have such a large percentage of teachers, and there's a threshold that we have to, we can pull in on the teacher in. Our goal is to get as many kids into the program as want to be in the program. The criteria, we are very clear about, is not based on like your individual skill or whatever, that is the design factor. It is not going to be one of those, okay, struggling school, we're putting you here or you're selling, we're putting you here, we want the gentleman. And.
And another piece to it too is, April, when we were talking about just earlier, when I was explaining to Patty, if we, if, right now, we're talking about a couple quarters is a teacher teaching Innovation Academy, we get a huge demand as an administrative team, we talk about this, Kevin, if, you know, I have a demand for potential four sections of this in science, all right, I can justify putting a hole in the science teacher completely at Innovation Academy and meet that demand and allowing that enrollment to expand in that area. So some of it's really going to be driven by that enrollment. So those are kind of our informal plans on how we're doing, we think we can address it. We had, we have had, you know, very baseline conversations with the staff about, this is what we can be phased with, how would you feel about that? You know, that, that was the solutions we've come up with as a team.
Okay, thank you.
One question. So Innovation Academy, you have, let's go with science, for instance, you have one science teacher teaching Innovation Academy. Generally speaking, your science teachers are somewhat subject-specific, so you've got a chemistry teacher, let's just say, for I can say, is there concern about the quality of instruction when students want to do biology or physics or something else?
That's where that Wave Two comes in, can it be? So we've been, we've been fortunate that we have the most diverse certification area covered with the people who apply, and we've talked, now if the opportunity comes up, then we, right now, we have a biology slash physical science teacher who's our choice. So he covers two different gamuts, but if chemistry were to come up, we have a chemistry teacher who was interested, who would be willing to assist in overseeing instruction of a project, a, you know, that students are working on and, you know, affirm that they are meeting those standards and provide some instruction for those students. So it's, you know, it's a unique model and a unique approach to it, but we are considering that, and that's kind of that Wave Two is make sure if those unique situations come up, we can address.
Maybe do a directed study. Also, in scheduling, we had discussed the ability for students, if they want to take the AP, to during that time of the day, that's during the week, that's when they go take the AP, like their AP class, and then they come back and they do other things. We've also, in the scheduling, we've looked at so far, already included a section for options, art, music, language, workshop, any of those types of programs we want to put in. Good thought, okay, then.
Do you foresee the need, starting in the 2021 school year, of a separate administrative team to receive it? Seems like it's a little complex with the guidance, perhaps?
The, the way we did it, Patty, where every administrator was involved in every single meeting, we've done with this, involved with the teacher selection, involved with the meetings with the teachers, the professional development, touring the other schools, we've all done something involved at each step of the way, we're pretty interchangeable right now. Any one of us can probably continue the work that's being done here right now. And that's, and that's our intent, to build the capacity where we're able to do.
Or it's just like another department in the school, for me, it's a bit of a factor. So like, plus on another world language department.
So you don't see one dedicated person who responds exclusively to the needs of Innovation Academy, whether it is, you know, I just wrote down a note here, it sounds like a charter school within a school, which is kind of seems that if you have that sort of model, there has to be some sort of direct, innovative, administrative oversight.
Do you remember when we had freshman academy here?
Oh, yeah.
So it's, it's similar to that, except instead of just freshmen, it's a whole cohort. So I, and I truly, and Paul told me if I'm wrong, truly think that we're interchangeable in this situation. We've all participated, we get the mindset and have each step of the way that involved in the development of this, and that's deliberate, so that we are interchangeable and we can , you know, support this.
And then a question? You got one?
I want to look at April.
I assume you asked me that as you move forward to this.
Yeah, yeah, definitely keep you guys updated.
Thank you very much. Moving on, did I receive this donation? That's all right. Interesting. Your first.
So we have a request from Chris, we, when we went to, we budgeted $13,000 for library bookshelves for the merge, and when they went to ask about those bookshelves, they were informed that they're about a six-week time period before they can get here. So she's put in a request to use end-of-year funds now so that we can get those ordered and get them here so that we can do this work over the summer, because if they don't come until August and we're trying to merge the libraries, it could be hard to get everything set up. So you want to put the order in now and not wait until July first.
How much?
13,000. And you're still a hybrid. Well, I think that's a, that's a really old $200,000.
Did that, we, our trust fund is public?
No, that's true.
That's good.
Yeah, that's right, kind of, yeah.
Because I know we don't have a $130,000. Yeah, we, yeah, that, um, $1,300, so.
Is this budgeted for next year? Okay.
Okay. Page of board?
My shit.
Any other questions, Tom? You got, Paul, pick?
Second item, we have a request for those of you who are new on the board, that's going on for many years now, we've had different science teachers come forward and want to offer different camps in their specialty in their schools. So we've had theater camp, musical camp, all kinds of different things. Usually, one of the art teachers does an art camp, so we have a request from the science teacher who has done a science camp in the past. We typically ask that the flyer is brought before the board, and Dan and I were talking earlier, there's already a couple of issues with that flyer because it indicates that it's a Amberberry Film School camp, which is not the case, so it's worth a teacher to make that clear because it's not, it's not a school camp. So what happens is the teachers run the camp, they collect the funds, they buy the supplies, that covers their instruction time, and what the board has traditionally done is waive a use for the classroom, so you let the teacher have access to that classroom during the summer. And then the other requirement is that they have to get an insurance policy and name up as an insured to make sure that whatever, whatever they're doing in the school is covered liability-wise. um, to make sure that whatever, whatever they're, um, doing in the school is covered liability-wise. So, that's the request for nature camp, so.
Nature camp, yeah.
Um, for the board. Second.
Question?
Will the flyer stay on, on there that it's not a school sponsor effectively?
Yes, that's the one piece that we noticed, is that, and it says that the Hill School is offering it, and that's not the case, so we need to edit it, and make it clear that it's the teacher is running the camp, or that it's a house of school.
Right.
Um, do we know how many students, is there a cap on how many students can put to?
She, uh, I know she needs the minimum, but I don't know if there's a cap.
Okay, I didn't see any numbers in it.
Yeah, I don't think so. I know she has needs, you know, so many to be able to run it, but, um, she doesn't put it in.
The minimum maximum number of students camp.
Yeah, but she wouldn't have been there.
That is, minimum number is not really a spec.
And it's not been a problem in the past. She's been able to run it, um, pretty consistently, so.
Would you love to?
Yeah, and, uh, maybe not an major example, she's done science. Um, we feel.
Okay. Other?
Would the transition with the screen merger of the two schools, is this going to be impacted in any way, or will this impact the merger?
Um, my understanding is that the details are worked out, um, I'm not sure Josh is even involved in that, okay, we're good.
Yeah, we're okay with it.
Are you okay?
It's, it's later towards the end, I believe.
June twenty-fourth?
Or it's right in the beginning.
So, I think the, I think, uh, the other art camp is towards the end.
The art camp is definitely towards the end, but towards by design, usually it's more in the middle. Um, and we believe at that point in August, we should be clear all the, the big hurdles.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like just a one-week camp, so June twenty-fourth is going to be it, so.
We will make it work.
Any other questions? All right.
Just a clarification, like on the end, like it's, that's where it says participation to participate in the Timber Hill School, nature camp, like any reference, but it's for implication.
Thank you, I, yeah, I first of all, I'm like, definitely, I do, I saw that one, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Um. Okay, great.
Go ahead.
Uh, the third item, uh, for those of you again who, um, are new to the board, the, um, food service program is the only sort of budget within our budget that is allowed to run a surplus from year to year, so, um, we do have to transfer any, um, debt, due debt at the end of the year, has to come out of the Fund One budget. We're not allowed to offset that debt with the food service surplus. So, we're talking about. Um, so there is a food service surplus. The board has asked, and probably several, three years ago, three or four years ago, has asked, that anytime, um, she's using her surplus fund, that it's brought, be brought before the board, so that the board's aware of what surplus is being used for, and that they can, um, can be okay with that. So, um, this summer, Josh has been working with Donna to, um, hook in their computer system. They're in the same boat as a lot of the others, and that they're not going to be supported, they're not, Windows ten is not going to work on them. Um, there, there has, there's an issue definitely with the program that they run, the service program. Um, so she's asking to, uh, eight thousand, one thirty-three out of her food service, um, surplus fund to, um, have Josh overhaul their computer system.
You can ask how much of some surplus fund?
I don't have a balance, please. To Paul? Yeah, I know all the people pay, but that is not one of them.
Are those like plenty of sale machines?
They are, um, but Patty's speaking of Josh.
Yeah, they're good jobs. Josh does a lot, you just might want to go.
Um, okay. Can, can I look there for you?
I can, yeah, I'm sure to.
Sorry.
Okay.
I jumped in here, sorry, second, okay, okay. Any other questions?
Do we actually have control of those funds, or does she technically have the budget that she wants?
Well, they're part of her food service budget, she run, she runs them in and uses your program and makes sure it stays in the black. But the board did ask for oversight in terms of when there's going to be fund spent out of that, that you would like, you know, you approved the van to be purchased, um, that kind of stuff.
Can we, can we as a board, just have to replace the refrigerator, use that fund, those funds?
Or do we have to have?
In that picture? I would think we could have her come to a meeting and talk to her about it.
Okay, question. Can we Google Adly, spend that money out of that account? That's the, for the director of space in that account?
As long as it's used within that.
Within the food service.
Right, that's.
But besides, if you put a new benchwood in there, we wouldn't need to go through the food service director in order to do that, we could just go ahead and do it. It's there, okay.
Micro managing.
So, well, I just want to know whether we have authority to run it, fund it, uh, that's all.
Um, so we don't, you know, with the budget, with the surplus, it's currently, but I, I mean, the way this sounds, is that budget, that surplus to grow to infinity?
It's managed because, as we once Amber took over the food service program, they're, they're recommending a, a certain cap. And I don't, we, we haven't spent it down, I remember it's tight, I don't know how much it's been, but we haven't spent it down.
A lot, a lot, a lot.
Too much.
A lot of money.
So, we've tried to have a plan for what the funds are. Um, yours program is the only program in the entire S E U that's like this. Everyone else instantly is running a debt, but Donna does a lot of catering, and
Oh.
um, she runs a really good program, which she will.
We, we have, you know.
It, yeah, but you also mentioned, I think, that, what, the USDA, whatever administrative, have that separate surplus camp or that, uh?
Josh, I did, I'm busy.
So, then following up on what Karen said.
Come on, just just, I do really.
I know, but no, it's, I've thought of how many, but wait a minute, if funds, if student debt must be taken out of Fund One, and if they surplus in the, sort of, service line, if this board is strongly required to have the ability to spend money from it, couldn't we, in theory, wipe out the debt?
Yeah. Say, is that one thing you are not allowed to do, is cover, um, student debt with service budget itself?
Even had it came from the board, and yet, uh, believe it or not.
The food service director.
Yeah, it, it, it's.
Okay, that's, that's on the loose.
Looking, looking at this from a whole different angle, and not discussing current student debt, but thinking back to the price increase for future years that we were asking about, would it be possible to earmark those funds to cover going forward by, then the meal or something toward a certain time period?
It's so restrictive.
Like you had asked.
I mean, yeah, I, it's. It is for those.
Making my, that we didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, what did you ask?
Um, allow Donna to upgrade the security software.
Uh, the surplus funds, I think it's on the floor, expected. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry. Your, your, okay, okay, that was it, thank you. That's you.
Yeah, right.
Quick question?
Patty, is that a state thing or federal thing, all that?
I'm pretty sure all of that will be federal, yeah.
If she said something, I would have told me, but I didn't.
Do you have a phone system?
Yeah, um, so I, we have requested some more information. I did speak with, uh, the other guy. And the, um, the process that they use, um, E-rate covers all the wiring, so E-rate is pretty, um, restrictive and requires a pretty expensive bidding, uh, process. So, they went out for bid, and in, within the bid for E-rate, they said they wanted to include a phone system in the bid, so they had to bid the wiring, um, and submit those, and, um, or they received, I think, out of the people that submitted them, only two qualified, and only one of those two, um, had a phone system that would work with the wiring that we were asking them to provide a goal for. So, that's the phone company that they chose, um, they're doing the wiring as well. There's also a spec sheet, um, that I told Dan earlier, there's a lot of questions, we'll need to invite someone else to come, talk about this topic, um, because he really got into the, into the weeds on this. Um, it is a voice-over internet, um, phone, that he talked about the, um, the hardware, and I know that when they're talking about, like, there's going to be seventeen of the four ninety G models, and forty is the four eighty G model. Um, what Josh shared with me was, basically, when you're in like a main switchboard situation, you need more lines, and you need more visibility to see who's on the phone, so those are the, sort of, the higher end, so there's a few of those. Um, the, the sixty-three phones that are only eighty-four dollars are just really generic basic phones that will be in the classroom. Um, so this does, um, get us to be nine-one-one compliant, which we have not been, our phones are going to be capable of doing that. Um, we did have extra funds, um, from the E-rate wiring bid, they came in lower, so that, even though you see that forty-two thousand dollar number, um, you'll prove thirty-two, and that will cover all of those. Yeah, they were, they had, um, the bid came in lower than Mary's, um, spec sheet for the E-rate fund, so, um, you know, it's all good.
So, we're doing, doing this.
Nope, nope, because.
Anybody have questions about the new phone system?
Go ahead.
One quick one, um, I don't know if this will affect the bottom line or not, I saw in the note at the beginning, on the back, um, the sales board can be done during the warm-ups, it's always warm, it's been time and a half with that. Will they be able to do a project like that during the summer?
Yes, my understanding is that it's, they are available to do it this summer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's why we, they wanted to do the wiring over the summer, so that it wouldn't be disruptive, and that's why we asked to add it. But now, get it all done and off.
Where are they looking?
Hmm, that's a good question. I'm not sure where they're at. He's been around a lot, because he, um, he did our S A E point seven, they've done, they've done a theory of process.
I would search it, but I guess.
Yeah.
Um, the only thing that, wild, wildness?
I think that's, I think that's a.
Telephone, uh, telephone.
So, the only thing that stood out to me, again, I don't know any of this stuff, is, they said analogization? Versus, I mean, everything's like digital, so I don't know what that means.
If the power goes out, you still have the ability to operate.
Okay.
There has to be one line of the S E U things, exactly, um, you can still get out.
Okay. That makes sense. All right.
Thank you.
Good thing. Anyone else have a question? Okay. You move on.
Nice to meet you, why don't you give a quick?
Um, so at the last meeting, we, uh, let you know that we were going to come and have a conversation tonight, that the cha- all the changes would necessarily be ready to go on in the next meeting, but, um, there were quite a few things that would need to be discussed and thought we could give you a heads up. I spent, did receive from the other group, MTA, it looks like the final version, right? Um, they, they were able to get them in ahead of time.
John, go ahead, read it through.
Well, I just thought, based on telephone, if there was work, it's probably done.
The, um.
Could be in the, uh, printed.
Yeah, I think the purple is the text, new text that they added, and then the purple that read was. Um, the only one that's not ready yet, um, is Hill and Village, and that's because we're running two panels, um, and a ton of work, yeah. A ton of work has been done, but a lot, a lot of side-by-side to see where things were done differently, so that we can make sure we're, we're on the same page when we get to one school. Um, so however you want to proceed, whether you want to start.
One at a time, final terrace?
Uh, okay, as you can see, the black is unchanged text, um, red is former, and the purple is the opposing text. The first one is uphill trist, it's just referring to the policy, so that somebody can actually go see the policy, and know where, where it's at. Um, under grading, under grade, it's seven, uh, we have a, um, formative work, we have a, uh, range of, uh, uh, minimum nine percent to, uh, maximum ten percent, we're just moving to a hundred percent, which is what everybody's been doing for a while. So, we're really just going for a hundred percent for some of this, uh, nine-one-three more country.
That's a question. Yeah. Does it, if I understand what you're writing at, does it make students less apt to do formative work?
Uh.
I know, I was one of those students.
Yeah, well, staff, staff will say that if you haven't done your formative work, then you think that it's something that's. But we have to, we have to be able to show that they practice, and they have knowledge, and if they're not going to, then we shouldn't be able to make that something that's.
Can I ask our students? Can I ask our students, yeah, this is why we bring them?
I mean, not with this new grading system. With the load system, you definitely, I would get a little bit of quality for it. I don't know how that's going to change next year, because I heard there's a lot of new grading systems coming in place, but this year, you can't get away with not doing formative work, because if you have multiple forms already, you get a one, so it's not like you're great.
Seems to be that up pretty quick. Well, I guess, thanks for it.
I have not seen a change in whether kids are going to formative work or not. Uh, people forget, even on a other point scale, traditionally, kids do not do formative work. That is, that's formative, that's practical. And we want them to be able to practice their, their work, uh, and to the point where they have a good understanding, so when they take that as some of the assessment, they, they have knowledge, they can do.
What type of feedback are you getting, I mean, are you receiving, are you starting, you know, a lack of, um, you know, a grade assigned, which you, uh?
Uh, you guys don't need to.
No feedback at all, sort of, parents, uh?
I, I, once you begin to live in that world, really begin to understand it, um, and that, that frankly takes time. As you go back to riding the bike, if you're in the formative work, learning to ride the bike, and you fall down on it all the time, it's pretty, pretty terrible, you don't succeed. Um, and then finally, at the end of learning to ride the bike, you ride it around the corner, back, you succeed, but all those formative grades, now average, that some of the tests, which will fail, um, if you go traditionally. And you take the formative away, all that work and practice goes into it, now some of it, you ride your bike, you succeed, and that's what we're after. Yep.
Um, you mentioned, so if a student doesn't perform the formative assessment, uh, they're not allowed to take it sometimes, I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, and it really is teacher, you know, corrected, um.
So, it's possible for a student to challenge a summit, without doing the formative?
Correct, and frankly, as a kid comes in, and gets some of it completely right, or sort of, you need to challenge that kid a little bit.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is that if you have a student who is, I'm not doing homework, and yet performs admirably on the summit.
Yeah.
Okay.
To be extreme about it, they're in a long class, they're on a grade, because they don't have it all.
I don't disagree, I just want to make sure the kid isn't being held back, because they are, for whatever reason, not doing formative.
No, you know, and, and I think, part of this process, uh, teachers have to know that students can have to go on the board for that.
Hmm.
Same with including relearn contracts, if students do the touches, we make them, we have to relearn. And that's, that's a really important component of it. One of the reasons we agreed, we went to this, uh, first of all, it is comprehensive, and, but staff has kind of merged that way, which kind of makes sense for them now. Whereas, I think, this, you know, while we get there, I think they're beginning to really, they're using it, uh, pre regularly.
Okay, thank you.
Someone? Hi?
I'm good, John. Uh, we, we also added, uh, we do run into one time, once in a while, when we do a recovery, a, a grade recovery, that sometimes is very, very difficult to duplicate the assessment. Um, project base, for example, is very difficult to relax, and you cover something that a whole group has done, or something that, so we just wanted to lay it in there. Uh, note, it's not all, some of this can be recreated. Um, we really follow this, uh, sometimes when students go on vacation, and they, uh, they're doing a newized project, and they come back, and how do you recreate something that they didn't have? So, we really wanted to make sure that we were, we had that, uh, ability, that it's not possible always to recreate a certain assessment.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, um.
I'll be back chat.
So, then there would be a comparable assessment?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, it could be another way, sometimes.
Something else?
Yeah, there'd be some other way to achieve that competency, we can't recreate a, um, you know, play, for example.
Exactly, but there is an alternative way to, to, to make the competency.
Then we have to go another direction. But sometimes we can achieve that, well, they're going to be able to. Sometimes we can achieve that, well, maybe they'll, you said they can redo it. Well, yeah, but you can't work the same.
It's the competency, it's not. Not somebody.
Right.
Thank you.
Uh, then during, in the key, we just, we're just updating it to, uh, because we are not using Word, we're using full point scales. So this is just brief like that. Uh, and then, uh, we just, you know, obviously you can see where we're taking some stuff out. The, uh, staying silent reading, we just don't do it that way in the building right now. So we're just cleaning that up. We do it in a totally different way, we don't have a, uh, specific time during the day that we're doing reading classes and all the time presentation. Um, standardized testing, we're just cleaning that up so it's not against the assessment system. Uh, and it's kneecap anymore, it's asked, we're just, that's just all cleaning up. Uh, teacher supervision on the playground, because someone who thinks we're more now with traffic, we just bumped it to five minutes. So the playground will start at seven thirty-five, seven thirty, seven thirty, sorry. Uh, let's get together to try to see what emerged out of it. Or if you felt like, uh, five minutes might make a difference actually with the high school, so there's a five plus congestion, we're hoping. Oh, the lizard bag, this was, I had to, lizard bag day, so it would be, uh, yeah. Um, failing to complete these assignments, resulting in students being recorded as absent for the day. Um, really, not getting into a lot, they're really not recorded anyway on wizard night days, so it's kind of redundant. It's kind of like, well, we're not going to say they're absent because probably as well as recorded. And then we just, in step two, some behavior expectations, fifth and sixth grader only really wanted to use a login. That, that's not a light effect today, we invite the student name on the desk, it's important to warn you. Uh, seventh and eighth grader not on that, so we just wanted to specify that in the handbook. I think we added in one class, so the student has two logins in one class, to clarify something. And since we go to, in a trimester, we're striking trimester, the problem solver requires a piece of that. Uh, and we're just, the next part, students expect to take P S R at home, which is problem solver required, retention, whether you want to touch a script, whether you want to call it. We felt like we needed to emphasize by undermining it, so that people might be a little more alert in the process. We'll, we'll, we'll see. Um, radio stations don't make announcements, the school district does, so we tell everybody else that the school district can do that. You hear that? Um, and then the last, parents under right to know, title one, title one funds, that was something that we had gone to an audit, type of one, and that's something they recommended to program. We did.
Questions, John?
Uh, just go method login, they, but that's, uh, if a kid misbehaved in class.
Yeah, it's basically a warning, they, they log in, they put a piece of paper they log in on. They state, you know, why they're logging in and they, they sign, and the teacher, they're probably trying to order, and just constantly quickly to see if they're in the back. During the class or whatever.
Right.
I just, uh, you know, two big airport information.
And what's the limit on that, that they're, you know, get a P S R?
Yeah, I think it's up to three, three logins, they don't get a P S R.
In the same class, if you log in?
Pretty much, throughout the course of the day. So they can go, and then there's a book that stays with them, so they may go class to class. So that staff know that there's an incident that, well, yeah, I don't think it's something that's like that, it is right, so, so we try to keep track of it.
And then for seventh and eighth grade?
Yep.
They just get a.
It's usually a verbal warning.
Okay.
You know, kids are, you know, outgoing, not used to it a little bit, so it's usually a verbal warning, and it goes quickly to the P S R.
Anything else to talk?
Okay, a quick one, maybe this is not necessarily a handbook thing, maybe, maybe it's the lizard bag thing or another thing. Um, since you brought up absence, how, how does that work? I, so this is personal experience.
Yep.
My son was sick, we knew he was not going to school that day.
Yep.
And then the lizard bag was called, and then, you know, there was some pressure to get that assignment done where there would have been school that day, he wouldn't have done it anyway. And so what, how, how does absence handle the lizard bag day? Are there, are there situations where a person could be marked as absent and this is saying that it wouldn't be for failure of the assignments, but.
Right, our, our lizard bag days are actually kind of live. So like if your son was absent, you'd still be knowing that, whether he's absent or it's lizard bag day or not. But we have, everything will be classroom. So, uh, majority of staff now, lizard bag day, it'd be the assignment they're going to do next day anyway.
Okay.
Um, so the expectation, we're going to, regardless, because that is, and I, that's a whole, from ten to five lizard bag day. The intent really isn't to do some project just for the day. You know, we have a whole day, and it really doesn't connect anywhere. So we're really trying to connect everything to what they're doing. So they go in, uh, I believe fifth grade is a little bit of a menu, but it really, we're really working for it. It's just a continuation of what's going on in the classroom. So they would be expecting to do that anyway, even if they were absent. Yeah.
So, and if this is a continuation, so today, if this isn't the appropriate time.
I, I could, I could, yeah, I could leave a short rope here, but.
No, I, I'm more than willing to let it go because I think this could be a much more protracted conversation. I just.
I, I'd rather wander down there if we could warn you.
Okay, but I'd like to.
Before winter.
Yeah, definitely, I'd like to add a discussion of lizard bag.
Yep.
I think we need to review, we need to reexamine that in light of summit and formative.
Yep.
And the way to sign to it. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to accept changes presented?
Um, come on.
Thanks, Ed. Anything, any other questions? On the favor?
Uh, yeah.
What, I'm close.
You're right. Okay.
Okay, if nothing else, a petition. Paul?
So our changes are color coded similarly to John's. Uh, I would add that there is some language in blue, which reflects the need to revisit that at later times. Um, largely because we meet as a member leadership team in midsummer. And changes to the handbook at that point are probably not a possibility, but nonetheless, we still have to have conversations about systemic change. So that's why you'll see some text in blue. Uh, the first section, this is more semantic than anything else, the language in the purple. It will be the new language replacing the language that is struck in red, is virtually verbatim. It was just, uh, presented differently in the program studies. So we wanted to make sure that those two documents were consistent. There's no logistical changes per se, it's the same concept, just worded in exact mirror of the program studies, we just bring it back and match. The next section is pretty dense, but it is, for lack of a better term, Nolan Boyd with the graduation of our class of twenty nineteen. They were the last holdover of a class that was, I would say impacted pretty significantly by our crossover in master schedules. And because of that, there was some inflexibility with, uh, course offerings and course selection. Uh, to go from, uh, the schedule that we did to the one that we are operating under now, that was provided some more flexibility. We wanted to maintain the same expectation in terms of rigor and credit count for the class of twenty nineteen. Once they graduate, we are going to revert back to one hundred and twenty credits for the rest of our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And the same kind of application for the distinction diploma will be in play here as well. So we're just, basically the crux of it is we're jumping the credit count from one hundred and ten to one hundred and twenty, which is two more classes, so we're forty percent.
Were current juniors aware of that when they were freshmen?
Yes, we did, as part of our schedule change, we did present that to them, but with that extra year as a buffer, there was still enough flexibility. That if early, uh, challenges to credit accumulation were to take place. They, there was still more room for, uh, recuperation.
Where, where were they with the change, major change, where was that, uh, for the sophomores?
Uh, they would have been freshman. Yeah. No, sophomores.
I mean, because they were already here.
Right.
This year's junior?
Yeah.
Like they've been sophomore, you know, the first year we entered the schedule, is that your question? The first year we entered the schedule?
First year under the schedule, they were freshmen.
They've been under the schedule all four years.
They've been in three, thirty-three when they graduated.
Four when they graduated, correct. Four when they graduated, all right, so they've had the full four years that.
Correct.
To get it done.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry, even we forget. Uh, so the next section, as I alluded to, a section in blue, this centers around our Pembroke Performance Project, which encompasses five components that all students must accomplish before they can graduate. Uh, we have had very pointed conversations of the leadership team and the administrative team around the efficacy of the performance project. How much fidelity is maintained to accomplishing all five components? And we simply want to have a conversation around, it's time to look at, um, a more applicable project, a capstone, if you will. Or something different than the true performance project that we've had as long as I can remember. Um, and something that maybe the students have more ownership in. So that is to be determined, but no substantive changes as of right now. Uh, we did reword some language around graduation requirements or what a student had to accomplish before they were eligible for graduation. Uh, namely around senior English. Uh, there was concern that students were, um, not passing senior English, which after four years of high school, if you're not passing senior English. Uh, we have some real concerns as to whether or not we want those people receiving a high school diploma. Uh, so we worded it very specifically so that they must have passed all of their senior English classes if they have taken more than one. Uh, as well as any other academic requirements, course, uh, requirements that they have to accumulate their credit by. And, yeah, and the other thing for this is, uh, if you do not pass senior English, that credit recovery for that course may not be completed until after graduation. So what we don't want to have happen, for example, is a senior getting to the end of finals week in two weeks. Only to realize that they're not passing senior English and they're going to, they're going to cramp and hastily try and get that credit back. And it's difficult for teachers, especially in courses where you're senior English and you're leaning to be good. You can't, you can't recuperate an entire year's worth of work in a week or less. And we don't want the, you know, that, that is a pretty significant course and it carries a lot of weight and importance to us. But we don't want to minimize that by saying, at the last second, if you're going to fail that course, do whatever it takes to pass. Because we can't put that burden on the student or the teacher. So we ask that credit recovery do not begin, does not begin until after graduation.
I've got a letter.
Is that for all classes and you should receive it?
Senior, well, for credit recovery?
Yeah.
Cannot begin until after graduation. Reassessment can take place before graduation, the credit recovery cannot. And reassessment is, you, you fail a competency or you fail an assignment, you can redo that assignment as time allows. But you cannot recover credit for the entire course before graduation. There was a very, uh, difficult conversation today at our leadership team meeting as to what the specificity of that means. And whether or not, in my opinion, in my opinion, if a student does not pass their final and they are afforded enough time to reassess that final in order to graduate, they should be allowed to. If it is much more than the final, if they're missing numerous competencies in that senior English or any course for that matter. My concern is that there is far too much that needs to be recuperated that we can squeeze into that short period of time. We're talking about a week, and we have a week of graduation practice, leading up to graduation on Saturday. That conceivably a student could reassess if it is within the parameters of acceptability. The entire course credit, that's also get a bit over my estimation, and I think that's shared by the administration. We, we can't, you can't recuperate a credit for a course in under a week, not even.
When you said credit for a course.
Yep.
Do you define that?
Passing the course, getting the five credits.
Okay, so we've been here many times, Paul, but I'm going to go here anyways. So they're failing one competency, they failed the course, right? So you're telling me that to, to Lee down there is missing one competency, we're not going to allow her to do, to recover in that last week?
Correct.
In order to pass that course, now it's a problem.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
It is a problem, definitely. Pat?
It's, I am. Go figure. If the student has not mastered the competency, and it's the most recent competency that Dan discussed, is what Dan's saying accurate? Because to me, there's a real difference between students, they, you know, a student has failed to recover the competency from January or from March. So they've had plenty of opportunity on getting.
A lot of opportunity, yep.
They've known that, that competency has, that they have not demonstrated competency since March in a certain area. I think that that's a little bit different than a senior who, if there is an assessment last week. Senior doesn't succeed with that competency, therefore their grade is so marginal that now they're failing for the year. If we are saying in the district that, okay, because of that one competency, which was just assessed two weeks ago, you can graduate. I'm going to stand and struggle.
The likelihood that that one competence or that one assessment is going to swing that competency that variably?
Mm-hmm.
It's possible, I will not rule out, but it, it is most unlikely. Our concern stems around the, in the same way, caring on the side of the student, that they, that they do perform well all semester or all year long in that course and they get to the final assessment and they get tripped up. I think it is far more feasible and reasonable to allow them to reassess on that final than it is to say, over the course of an entire semester or a year, you have struggled in these competencies, but let's give you this last week to try and recuperate all of it. That's essentially the spirit of what we're trying to say. Not the recency.
Not the success, Paul. That's not what this verbic says, first of all, I, I don't agree with you in the whole, and you realize that.
I do as well.
Yeah, well, 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 it's that way, but this here is very restrictive, the language is very restrictive and, um, I, I personally don't feel appropriate.
I don't have information for.
Just what Paul's saying was, like, it's like the September Academy Leadership Day, the department liaison, the ministry team. If a student's tripped up by an assessment, it's under the year's P S seven, but has performed well, has met the requirements, and then is a good student in that class. They're afforded opportunities to pass. However, if they have been struggling since January, December, and have not recouped those competencies and this is a required class for their graduation, that recovery may not occur until, may, and because of the amount, and it's not because we want to limit them to graduate but because of the amount remediation and addressing those competencies. If it's happened through the form of reassessment and they continue to fail, the local reteach and stuff is probably going to exceed the week. Not that it won't start before graduation, in some cases, we hesitate to start recovery, meet graduation requirement, participate. Or often the situation we talked about in January itself, this benefit comes to recover. It's ongoing and they continue to fail, so it's, it's obvious that we need to do a reteach and it's going to take longer than a couple of days. So do we try and push into that finish line or do we take the time? Now, I understand that probably doesn't say exactly that right now.
We've had, something's brought up, board members here, um, this is, this is a long-term conversation. We've had, um, conversations around recovery and that recovery has been a struggle for the district. And I think that we at the district need to do a better job with recovery before we start. before we start putting language like this out there to restrict students' graduation. I think we have a responsibility as a district to try recovery in whatever it looks like and make sure that these students have the opportunity to graduate.
You worry that small things have been in our thinking handles for the last few years.
Yeah, more than half the last year. I just got back up on my soapbox tonight, Jen.
And I'm not, and I'm not saying I disagree with you, but.
I, I'm just, I, I, I guess I'm concerned about that marginal student, the student that struggles all the way through. If students struggles all the way through and in the pressure that finals week, I mean, hey, somebody's pulling, uh, I don't know, twos all year long on the competencies, but is, is passing, I guess, is that what we're calling it? Um, and that last one, they, they pull a one on it and you can look at it, it sounds, it, it puts that, the wording puts that student at risk. Because that student's struggling, they're not gonna recover anymore. And you could go past, you know, um, past graduation and, and do it, and they might get that two later, but now they, they might get the two, but they, where they had one, but now they can't walk. You know, that's a, you know, and I think I, we talked about this last year, I, I think it was on the paper, on page last year, where they just, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a life, and maybe they don't get that piece of paper that day. And to get that piece of paper, you need to, you know, do recovery, but to prohibit, so, especially the marginal students, you know, maybe they belong somewhere else, learn, need to learn somehow else. Um, just, I think, you know, for.
Got a question.
Their, um, you know, first steam moving forward might be the, um, just, I don't, I don't think it should be that, restrictive, and I think it all should be looked on at, at rather one blanket statement on a case-by-case basis. Cause you can't, you can't cover all these kids with what I'm probably, you know, so.
And I think the worst we've been, the year that we've been discussing this, um, it's that marginal student that we all largely have been concerned about. Your high-end students, they're gonna pass, so I don't have a lot of concern about it. The ones that aren't doing the work, I'm not suggesting that those ones are, shouldn't be the ones walking tall. I, my concern is the marginal ones kind of limped through, whether it's English or science or anything else, those are generally the students that raise concern. And I've led me into maybe a fair number of them.
And I think oftentimes too, there are other factors that are causing these students to not be successful. Um, they, they have no control over it, we have no control over it. And, you know, I think Jean's right, but for some of these kids, the diploma is more than a piece of paper saying that you've completed high school, but it's a matter of self-esteem. It gets them on a path to, you know, greater success. And I think that that makes the final summative, or if you wanna call it, possibly have a date for an eighteen-year-old. And should have been. You know, and again, for the, for the, for the kids who are going on, who are going to be successful, that last summative is probably meaningless, but for the marginal students, the kid who struggles, the kid who has some baggage that they bring to school every day, um, that, that summative is come for a horse. And I'm not sure it should.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I would just, um, chime in and say that a graduation ceremony is not only for that student, but for that student's family. And it's, it's a big deal to get your kid to that point. Um, so if you have that student and that student knows that the diploma is not, you want a reminder you get them, why can't they walk and not get their diploma? They know they still have to be worked. You're not awarding them this diploma, you're giving them the dignity to walk across the stage again here.
And I heard that point many times before, and to that I would say minimalizes the effort and the achievement of the students who did do what it takes to earn the diploma that's in that binder that they walked across the stage for. And that, that is equally as important to the parents of students who do make the mark to get there as it would be to the ones who didn't quite get there, but were allowing them to take part in the ceremony. It, it's a delicate balance and we try, we try to maintain respect for, you know, flying Aunt Millie in from the west coast, thinking that, you know, her nephew's gonna graduate, only to find out once he gets there that he's not. We've had the difficult conversations, um, but we also maintain a healthy respect for the amount of work that the students who have gone through four years to get there and actually have done it, you know, that achievement is pretty substantial to us as well.
Again, there's the difference between walking across the stage and being awarded a long diploma. Where the diploma can be awarded when work is done, so we're not gonna publicly shame the student. That would be my concern.
Others?
Was we talking about the phone?
If I just said, just kidding. This was just a draft. I, I also think the, you know, you mentioned the students that really did work hard and I, I think the vast majority of them would want their classmates to be with them, not based on what I did or what you did, but, you know, we were here together, we started the journey, we're finishing it together, you know, that kinda, I think the majority, I'm sure there's, you know, there would be resentment from, from certain students, but the vast majority, I mean, they're pretty much all in the middle. You know, you've got your really hard workers and you've got the ones probably like me that kinda, you know, wandered through. But, you know, pretty much everybody's in the middle and, you know, most of them are all friends and get along or at least acquainted with each other and, and they started it together and finished it together.
Is it fair to say that there have been students where students were struggling at the end and special consideration was given to their progress throughout the year and?
Yeah, so that goes to Tim's point earlier where the process for, uh, recovery of a failed competency has, we're well into that for many seniors right now who started this weeks, if not months ago. This particular language applies to the last true assessment that they're going to take in a given course. And the likelihood, I maintain the likelihood that that is going to swing the pendulum that far in a direction where they will, they will not graduate because of that performance is possible but unlikely. I mean, I think if they're trending down that path in February, March, and April, the teacher's gonna pull them aside early in October and say, look, these are the competencies you're proficient in, we need to get you on track to restore them, so that when we get to the final and you've done the work, you've mastered the content and you will perform fine on the final.
I, I just don't see the respect for language. Why, why, why the, if they're failing, Paul? And if you're failing all year and you haven't been able to recover, then they're not gonna graduate. They're not gonna walk. I don't see why this language is used.
Because then at, you know, two-thirty on Friday, June seventh, a student shows up at the teacher's door and says, what do I need to do to graduate tomorrow? I need to recover. That's where I have a problem.
I get that, yeah, no.
And, and it's happened, it happened to me as a teacher. I've watched it happen as an administrator without a specific language dedicated to the recovery process, not the reassessment, but competency recovery or credit recovery. You're going to have those students come to you at the eleventh hour, putting a tremendous burden on the teachers who then hear those stories about, my parents just wanted me to graduate, what do I need to do? I think that's a lot.
I, I think the distinct difference between the student that's failed six competencies and showing up at your door at the last minute saying, I need to recover, versus the one that failed his final competency at the end of the year and has passed everything else all along, I think there's a major difference between the two. And I think the staff has the ability to sort that out. I just, I, I just don't see the need for this language.
Would, would you, would it be appropriate for us to go back and try and come up with a draft statement that would address your concern? But, so let's get more fun, you know, just for the students that may.
Maybe including the addition of a case-by-case review. I mean, yeah, we're all on board with, with like, if they haven't done the work. You know, that's not a question, it's just that, that last, that last one. You know, the pressures of finals, we, you know, we've all been there, so I just will.
I, Paul's very, so leave your hand up, I just don't wanna speak.
I was just gonna say, I mean, competency-based grading doesn't require a final technically. So if you've, you've done all the work and you've been competent, a final in the end should not be required. If they've shown that they've done the work in research, writing, reading, literature, like, if they've shown they've done it all, then a final assessment based on questions doesn't show your knowledge or your work. And that's how I feel in my, of human biology class this year, this whole year, so I get it.
Okay, Pat?
I recall, um, there was an item in, in another part of the handbook that, um, the top ten rankings are based on the end of the first semester for the ranking. So why do we have kids then knocking on some teacher's door at the eleventh hour? Why can't we have the cutoff third Saturday in May, whatever? But the last, the last summative is assigned at that particular, you know, is, is assigned and posted on, you know, the third Friday in May and have the rest of the semester be education for education's sake without a summative without a grade? Um, that would alleviate folks knocking on the door, folks saying, I need to recover this, that, the other thing. Well, you, you, you've got this date in which all, all competencies must be met. And then maybe for the remaining two weeks, or whatever period you decide to use, it's just learning. That alleviates the pressure on the teachers, which I mean, obviously I'm sensitive to that. But there's a way to, to kind of bring all parties together here.
I would equate that, that tactic to the results we get when we attach minimal value to formative work. So by that I mean, if, if the students understand that there's little to be gained by doing the formative work, if they know as a senior with two or three weeks left, that the work I'm going to do for the sake of learning is meaningless and doesn't have an attachment to my grade, I may not even show up, let alone do work. And then we have a different, a different problem on our hands where we have attendance issue and if they're all of a sudden not showing up and, and we've gotta answer to, you know, college, college admissions grads who wanna know why, you know, the senior results didn't just drop off because of the earth for the last two weeks. I understand having the cutoff date gives you some hard and fast parameters, but it also presents the opportunity for students to relax a little bit, terminal it for three weeks instead of one. Cause right now, they, the whole week before graduations is purely graduation practice. There's no academic rigor there per se, unless they're doing reassessment.
Well, I think you can have both ways. I mean, if, if the purpose of competencies is to, you know, instill a love of education and a love of learning, then we're not doing our job, because there has to be that love of learning. The idea, because we hope to leave us, we want them to be, I mean, it's not that part of our mission, to be lifelong learners. Well, maybe lifelong learning can start while they're still here at Pembroke Academy. And I think that it's more than that, it's worth trying. It's certainly better than students' time to recover a competency forty-eight hours before the graduation.
So I think the language that you use, the exception to, really is grounded in the belief that if a student is in good academic standards, failed the final, requires considerable remediation prior to graduation, that needs to take place after graduation. And I, I know that there's a lot of wiggle room for these fringe scenarios to take place. And if we, if we maintain fidelity to that language, then no, it doesn't allow for erring on the side of the student. But I, I think we, in our best professional judgment, do use those case-by-case spaces to, to show flexibility with that language as difficult as it is to comprehend the students. What, what do I have to do to graduate should not be the question, it should be, I was that close and I missed it over the final, what, what option, what, what opportunities do I have to recuperate that?
I think, you know, to try and sum it up for the board, I think you're gonna need to reword the language. I think this language is kind of impalable for the board. I mean, it's something between where we are, where you are, Paul, it might be a little more powerful, but I, I don't think we're gonna.
And I was saying, why, I'm kind of on the fence on this one. Um, I, I, I kinda hear Paul's point of view and, and, you know, there's some, I see some value in having a hard line sometimes. There's gonna be times in the kid's life where, you know, their boss says, get this project done by Friday at three or you're outta here, and they're gonna have to get that project done by Friday at three. So, you know, having some defined requirements, I don't think that's a bad thing. On the other hand, we're dealing with students who, maybe there's not a parent in the house for three or four days a week, and they're even little brothers and sisters in it. So I, I agree with Dan, I think it needs to be reworded. And I think the thing that would make me personally feel better is if there was some way to, to spell out right in there that the administration has some responsibility to consider those fringe cases right in there. Like, we understand that, you know, that there's some flexibility, there're gonna be some things that don't fit this, I'm eager to try. I think everybody's agreed that you've got the kids that obviously have put in the effort and they're not the ones that we're talking about here, and you've got the kids that have put in all the effort and they're not the ones we're talking about here. But there's gonna be a couple of kids every year that it's, they're right on the line, extenuating circumstances. And I would love to see language in there that, that points directly to them and says, you know, we can sit down with that student and apparently whatever and figure it out. Give them the opportunity. I mean, I guess my thing is, give them every opportunity to make it so that Aunt Millie's flight works out. And if they still don't, if mom and dad aren't willing to help, if the kid doesn't show up for that meeting, whatever, um, then, you know, they, they've done it to themselves. But that, just that last thing, like, we will sit down with you first week of June, do whatever we can to figure it out. I don't know if we can put that in there, but something given the administration, I guess, the, the final say would make me feel better.
Someone say something?
That would, uh.
Uh, no, moving on.
Final assessments. We, yeah, we, okay, we do not have any language yet, we do not have the decision yet on what this will look like. But there, as Julie alluded to, there are obvious questions about the necessity of or validity of offering final assessments under, we hope to be someday a true competency-based education model. We are not there yet, therefore we are not changing anything yet. But we plan to dive into this topic in particular, uh, pretty considerably this summer with our leadership team. Getting some sense from the teachers as to what their views on this are. Uh, and obviously anything substantive that would come from that discussion would go before you, uh, for consideration. The next language that is, is stripping and read is simply reflective of the practice we were going to implement this year. Now, this year's over, we don't need to have that language in the handbook any longer. Uh, report cards, we no longer mail them unless at the request of a parent. We are trying to move, uh, purely to a digital distribution platform. Uh, but of course, if a parent does not have access to AllMO or the internet, we would certainly make those hard copies available. Uh, we no longer utilize the smarter balance test for our standardized tests, we utilize the SAT. Much greater, more delighted with yours. Uh, dress guidelines, we were asked by the staff, um, albeit they were very appreciative of the brevity of our language this year. We needed to reemphasize the fact that contraband would not be allowed on attire, so we put some language in there to differentiate, um, you know, the normal attire and things that would not be acceptable in terms of labeling. And then electronic devices policy, also in blue, represents another, uh, pretty deep dive conversation that we have to have over what is our intent versus what is actually taking place with regards to prohibition on cell phones or other electronic devices. You know, we're, we're, on the one hand, talking about a one-to-one initiative refreshment, but at the same time, we have electronic policy, device policy in our handbook. So we wanna make sure that that is accurate and reflective of our intention and spirit of policy. And I know that a lot of teachers are moving towards this greater flexibility in the classroom, while others still have traditional parameters about, we want this off the way of the dinner class. More conversation to be had. And the final thing is another semantical thing, uh, right to no, no child left behind, we no longer have, it is now ESSA, every student succeeds that. So that is something that we will reference in our handbook from now on.
Do you not need to take that swing? Give me that. Paul, over to you.
What's that?
I don't know my desk. Don't need to reach back, Paul.
Yeah.
And do you have something?
No, I was, I was, I was simply going to make a motion to table the whole thing anyway, just because there's some electronic tech in there that I don't want to mention today yet.
Okay. So we will use it this next time. Sure. Maybe.
We should have something for you then.
Okay.
And then I think that's maybe ready to, do you have anything you want to share tonight or do you want to redo the whole thing?
Um, maybe talk a little bit about the process that we've been through and where our handbook is at right now. We had a team of teachers come from Hill and Village that took each handbook side by side and just pulled out things that are reflective of the same and things that were different. And we found a majority of the items, I think thirty-seven categories were of the same, so that made it somewhat easy. The areas of difference were structural and formatting differences. We also had some differences in level of specificity of what was outlined. And then we found that some things were in one handbook but not in the other. So where we're at now is streamlining so structural formatting and making sure that what was in one is now in the combined. And then there were just a few areas where protocol and practices were different, and that's the piece where Suzie and I have been working on in streamlining those, and those should be ready for this.
Want to add something? Okay. You're in business. What is it? Julie, how are you doing?
Good, yeah.
Good.
Um, so I actually didn't think there was a sense of any, but such a sad sense, but we were talking about the, lately actually just been talking about class day, getting together for graduation and basically hoping the class of twenty nineteen would get together and get ready to graduate, but also the mental health of the students that I'm definitely concerned about. I guess the school as a whole, I guess this year it's just been shown that students, and I guess maybe even some teachers we've just seen, I guess, a lack of not caring, the grading system really brought, I guess, the whole school to just like down, like, I guess as a class and a center we talked, we discussed how like, we just felt this year, so, like even with the carnival, just the energy was just so much less. I don't know how to explain it, but I felt like this year, we just don't know how to get the school spirit up anymore. We don't know how to get people involved. The senior class, I don't know, I'm not saying we were the most involved class, but we were pretty hyper energetic class and we got a lot of people involved and we still actually believe there's not going to be much involvement. So we just felt, I guess, we don't know how to get people involved. We have elections for the spirit a lot, but we don't have people, many people remain to do that.
Question, Julie?
Good morning. We, we talked a couple of weeks ago on the, the major presentations that were here. Can you talk a little bit about student perspective on not just that particular one, but those types of programs generally well received? Do you guys feel like they're informative and useful? Do you feel like most of the student body actually pays attention to them?
Um, I generally feel like the student body afterwards didn't particularly understand why we went through that. I think the students that are more mature understood why we went through that, and students that have been doing this or need to be talked to about it. But I think it was just like a general consensus that students were upset that every single person had to sit through it. Personally, I understand this is just a big problem in our school right now, but I think honestly bullying is a big problem in our school. Way bigger problem than vaping at school right now, honestly. I think clinic, people not involving other than groups, and not enough clubs as well either, you know, because people are not involved at all in the school anymore. And I think people need to start just getting more involved and helping out, I guess.
What do you think the involvement should drop? Can I get it?
We cannot figure out why, we don't know. We thought, even with like the grading system this year, not to put that as a blame of everything, but I think the frustration from the teachers came off on the students. The students followed the teachers, upset about the grading system because they didn't like it either, and that was the consensus with the best. And I got some of the teachers that they wanted in of it, and the students didn't like it either. I guess also just a lot of problems that happened this year about the school. And students about that a lot, especially starting to speak, which was definitely the greatest event that the school this year, the paper. I think that brought a lot of topics to the school, but I think it also brought community as well.
Um, I, the, there's someone else with a question.
Okay, this is a passing, passing thought I'm having here, this happened in a couple of the school districts. But hearing you speak today, it adds a different perspective to, you know, what the normal meetings are like. And what would your opinion be? Would there be interest from the student body if we moved forward something to have a student representative, non-voting representative to the school board? Do you think that'd be something that would be?
Yeah, I think definitely someone like as a part of like the school that wants to continue helping out, but also wants to make a change in the school, there is some of that actually in the voice and wants to do something about it. And yeah, I definitely think that maybe then like a group of people coming to like immediate just discussing, not only, not only one person, but I guess kind of Paul, like the P A leadership team, even though it's student leadership, I don't even know if we have it at our school, but I guess, I know we have a senate, but we do most of like the organization, like the activities are one part, but I guess we've been doing more maybe senate next year or maybe starting our own group where we talk about like the mental health of students in the school, because there's obviously a decline in like involvement, I guess, I feel. That was just like, I guess, I feel.
I guess, at least one vote, yeah, not impossible to. As a board, we heard the administration about bullying, really that they aren't being presented with bullying issues within the school. However, as board members, we were hearing about bullying from outside of the seats we kind of spin in it, and this is the first time we've got a student speak to bullying.
Yeah.
Can you speak to kind of what's going on in the building?
Um, so I guess from like the younger grade levels, from like whatever, like Facebook posts from our parents online about that whole situation. And then I guess just like students not being nice to others, I don't know, just not involving each other in activities and including them from other groups, and not being like one whole class, I guess, and kind of just like separating themselves from others and it's just, I think the, you know, the, like kindergartners, you teach some, be nice to others, they'll be nicer to you. That's not how it is anymore. And I feel like maybe we should start teaching like movement, that honesty, the choose love movement. Such an amazing, amazing movement. And I think Autumn did such a great job, but I feel like more people didn't hear about it. I think more of our class didn't hear about it. And I think maybe not that program, but maybe a different program, like, for high schoolers, for example, more for middle schoolers, kind of more towards them. But I think maybe turning around toward the school or even having, I know we have guys in the public, like even someone to talk to. I know I am a therapist myself, but I go to see Mr. Bachelter, he's a school psychologist, like he's not a therapist, like he doesn't know where to talk about it, but then I guess maybe have someone like that to do it.
But from a student perspective, I mean, stick tight on bullying.
Yeah.
Is there a feeling among the students that there's a, a mechanism or a program to, is there someone to go to? Is there fear to go to somebody and report bullying?
Is there fear to do it? Yeah. No, you don't, oh yeah, you don't want to be a bitch, you don't want to go to somebody and say something like, typically I'm, 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 I'm people that don't want to get admin involved, but I guess, I feel like students should know that they can go to somebody and not just put a piece of paper in like the box right here. Like I feel like students should know that they can go to this department, they can go to that neighborhood and talk to them about stuff. Mostly they do that, like students actually like talk to their teacher. And I hope the teacher lets them, not realize, but the teacher, I think teachers in general usually have conversations with them, so they'll open up and do the topics, like how can the right teacher go to help?
Just quickly, two things, and maybe I'm not hearing it clearly, but I'm hearing the word bullying talked around. I'm also hearing, I think, a lack of inclusion, and I think that there's a really difference.
Yeah.
And I think that sometimes we use words that are recital, but may not be accurate. And if the student body is not inclusive, that means a lot of things. If students are being bullied, that gets into some legal issues.
Like bullying is in the lower grade level right now, I mean, at least the top five grade, but I mean, I think the lower grade levels, you just feel like the consensus of like arguing and like is not even doing classes anymore, like that. I don't know if that's a good grade level.
Okay, so when you're saying lower grade levels, that's grade levels, do you talk in high school, are you talking?
No, I mean freshman, sophomore.
Freshman and sophomore.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the grade levels that aren't mature enough to know that being nice to each other is a thing, you know what I mean?
And being nice and admirable is a part of inclusion, may not always be bullying. So I guess, I just want to kind of conclude my part with this, with, do you think that your advocacy program is, is a place where these types of issues can be better addressed?
Yeah, I definitely think so. I definitely think students should be able to have like, maybe not even teachers, maybe a group of students to go to. Because like there was a peer, I think it was like a peer issue or something like that in here, and I remember that and people go to that for students, students to talk to, I guess, because, I don't know, I just didn't feel like it was time enough to go to talk to. I personally did not, I mean, bullying was that one, of like bullying experiences. I think it's just more like online even as well, social media, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, that's really kind of worth trying to drive to, thanks for getting that. I'll just go, if you have something, or if that, mental health issues, you're separate, obviously separate from bullying and isolation issues. What's the sense of the district's ability to address mental health issues?
What do you think? Like, what is our?
You mentioned earlier that there was, that the mental health of the, of the student population is deteriorating over the years. We, we get a report every couple of years on risky behavior and the, the mental health issues of the, of the student population and we're seeing, you know, pile of anxiety among students and some risky behaviors. Do you feel there's programs within the building to help students address those?
Not as, not that, not that I personally know of. I mean, I, I might not be the best student to ask because I personally don't have certain issues like this, but I know in state, other students, they did not have people to go to when they felt like they were alone or maybe not even being bullied, but they just didn't have someone to talk to or didn't have a place to go where they felt like, I figured shit's bad as well. I know they're not staying, but, you know, the same feeling of being alone, not having somebody, I think that would like have some.
Great. Thanks, everyone, really appreciate it. Anyone else have questions? Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I see you.
Bye. We have the next three, it was the night after our last meeting. Our next meeting is on June twelfth. And the majority of the time that our last meeting was spent being introduced to our new tech director, and Mr. Green, and Josh Brady, he's a seventeen-year member of the Penn State district, and knows, knows the district inside and out. He's working towards core of the standard course, have no idea what he is, but when the mail is, when the seven, because they're not going to be, um.
That'll support February.
Yeah, that, okay. Thank you. And something about replacing when there's seven, it's important that it's, um, and then there was something about quantum gigabits, but I'm going to be going for ten to make that. Um, we have a number of policies, um, and have some regulations in place. But overall, the, the big item for us was the very smooth transition from Mary to Josh.
Questions for Pat? Uh, budget committee, you've done any of that, maybe schedule that?
I thought June, June fourth or ninth. I, no, no, I was Sunday, no, I don't, I don't remember seeing your new date, but Sunday got, got canceled or?
Yeah, there was something out there, but I didn't, after that.
I can't remember the date now.
I'm trying to open up the calendar because I, I've got it circled out.
Uh, graduation is June seventh at the PMX news. The anticipated graduation is nine students, and the big news is that they're in transition to move to the new building, and they're asking for people to donate financial or resources or give time to donate.
Congratulations.
Congratulations on the board. So are they going to finish the school year potentially where they are or they move?
I don't know the details, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what's next?
Did they buy the building?
I was about to ask.
Yeah, they bought the building.
The office and all.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Uh, cultural support, I guess that's the other one. You're welcome.
We had the Village tribute over the weekend, the recognition ceremony for the building. It was very well attended, estimated to be between eight and a hundred people came. There were former teachers, administrators, and students. They were able to walk through the building, look through some old pictures, and then there was a space where they would leave a memory or define a little bit of something. One of the neat things that was taken is they took a photo of anybody who was there who was a student at Village School, and it ranged from kindergartners up to folks who are retired, so they were doing the picture. The other thing going on at Hill and Village, in order to bring together our two staffs, we did some planning on strengths and needs, and we went through a protocol together and tried to come up with areas with focus, what we're calling our innovation team, which is something that Village had used, and we're redefining those for Hill and Village. Those areas that we came up with are literacy, math, social emotional learning, and climate and culture. And so that work has already started this year, that will carry on through next year.
Questions for you?
John?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, it's just a comment, I watched the Village School thing, it was very well done, and it's pretty amazing, I picked up a picture of Manson Donahue, like he was principal in the fifties, and he was standing next to me at the time, pretty surreal to see, he was already in like his mid-thirties in the picture, but it was, it was very well done. I really enjoyed it.
We also have our road race, I think the twenty-third annual road race on Friday, if anyone's available, wants to stop by, I think we'll be running and walking.
I'll be running too. My oldest plan, I don't want to trouble.
Do you guys keep having tradition with guys smirch?
We haven't talked about it, I would expect some form of that will continue, it's been twenty-three years and no one's wrong. Our, our first graders do come up.
Our first graders do come up and participate already, so that's something that's my first before kindergarten students do.
John?
Our baseball and softball teams actually play the home games, we have a few of those in. It was pretty lucky, it was a while, but yeah, it's awesome, but I'm actually, um, you know, that popular city. Um, we, I think, Harald's our last day of our checking, um, so we've actually been a dead group, I think it was final question there. Last week, uh, we spent some time in a staff meeting going through some safety protocols, we did a table talk, uh, on reading justification of students. So we gave them a scenario, staffed a scenario, and they had it in their teens, had to figure out how to read and count, make sure all the kids were accounted for. But a lot of good conversation, hopefully we haven't spent a lot of time on the justification, because we always see two things that we think, you know, we go outside, we're all there, if we had to back up here, we're all there. But what happens when it scatters? Uh, we had, we had, well, then what do you have to do? So we spent some time with that, we also have, uh, each classroom has emergency buckets, I mean, went through all the buckets to make sure everybody knew what was in it, what it's used for, uh, those type of things. Well, I'm thinking I'll probably come to you later next meeting on, I have, and it's research on, I know it's boring stuff, but copying and printing. Um, and, uh, we have a number of printers in the school that are getting on the holder side. So our contract, our contact with our company that does our YouTube for our copy machine, we're trying to downsize significantly, but increase the ability to use those machines. We have more copiers, less printers, giving an idea, we spend about five thousand dollars a year on ink alone for the printers. And that comes out of our supply line, so there's no, I have about ten thousand dollars the last few years, we have it, goes just to ink. So this will allow us to spend about the same amount of money. Um, the leasing company managed it all, they fixed all the brakes, all the printer ink, everything that comes with the lease. You know, I think it would be more efficient, uh, and over time, we might have to keep replacing these printers, they come back in a month or a month. So we, we do that, that's how it's made, is everybody has a copy machine, they print copies, they do nothing else. Yeah, we would just do, do the different wings of the building, uh, you know, so with the downsides, we need like, we have like thirteen printers. Uh, they need to get down to about six, five years, hold two in the office, but kind of do that. So I'd have to transfer some money, you know, to do that, but I think that's something that, the numbers coming back, we, we would actually stay, like, like, uh, initial first year of all the time, I think it's a money, uh, free money.
Any more questions? Questions for John?
Comment, and I'd be interested to see after a few years of the one-to-one program at high school. If that had a significant impact on the amount of paper and drawing stuff that they go through, um, I'd, being an IT guy to being in two thousand and nineteen, the fact that we spent five grand on commerce. Saying to be, I mean, not saying, you know, everybody does it, but the more that we can provide.
Well, we are definitely work, you know, and technically we're one-to-one at the most, we don't issue that to students. But we certainly, I have one teacher that's supposed to be completely fearless next year. Um, and so we're working towards that, I, sometimes we get frustrated with the other digitally, and I mean, print them.
Right, right, definitely.
It's like, well, we don't, so I, that's part of this, and then the sleaze would be able, and as we, give an example, the copiers isn't just a print, they can, they can go and take their license plate and copy it. Like, or scan it, and they fill it out digitally, so all of those things we can do, you know, it's more efficient than else, and hopefully it would bring down like all this.
No? No, I was just gonna say, my point is, we've been doing that for a long time, in case, then they go across it.
Yes.
We don't have printers, we have copy machines, we can remotely send work.
Right, right.
It can co-lay, it's, you know.
We have those on one machine in the building, you know, where we have forty people access.
Right, you know, and as you said, we have them all, you know.
Right.
Five or six will put up the building.
Right.
And the, you know, the work order may be impeded.
Correct.
So I may send it, but it may not be ready for ten minutes after I get there. But at least it will get there regardless of where I'm at. Of course, you have to be careful that it doesn't go down that building. But no, that's, that's a gray opportunity.
Oh. We had a very successful bi-entennial event two weeks ago, uh, Saturday, the eleventh. We had induction ceremonies for our performing arts and athletic halls of fame, very well attended. Followed that up with proms and pass-entertainment in Polis, Alpine Grove, um, I want to say somewhere between four and five hundred students, um, which is a substantial number. Uh, they were able to accommodate us very well in Polis, so we had a great time, no issues to report. And, uh, senior file next week, that's all.
Any questions for Paul? Can I ask a question for Paul?
I did have one other comment that I think is important, nothing to worry about. Uh, we're projecting next year, uh, it might be a record of a hundred and forty-four kids signing up for the annual. And we're projected to have a little over three hundred, and we're almost half the way to taking this.
We've run it there pretty soon.
Yeah.
Right.
We've got a little grid. That's projected, you know, maybe up or down, we'll see how it goes, but.
How's the transition to the?
Um, I mean, I wouldn't say we have those kind of numbers coming up every year, we usually have a little bit of drop off. But I would still say, I mean, our banner going is very robust, it was five, four days ago.
I saw the banner downstairs, and I thought that was really kind of neat, like it was a dedicated Dan banner.
Yeah.
You know, and now, you know, Tom's saying that at TRF, the number is about to be.
Might as well be sent twenty a year, I mean, that's my goal, because we know what happens when it's outside, you know, try, and then we start off, everybody is integrated, everybody wants to play. And if I was having to do a creative pair of the numbers, you really want, I'd love to, we get to twenty, twenty-five a year, and we're getting really close to that.
Yeah, I'd say we're up around seventy-five, I could see that.
I'm not expecting that stage.
They do now, but it's, it's very, very, not that much.
As of next year, we're almost out of our own stage.
Yeah.
Like, we don't know where we're gonna fit, they're all based on where the kids are coming and who's coming out.
It's been that way for a little while, it's kind of, they've been like, you know, how much longer are we gonna fit there? Gonna have to stand on its own.
What's that to him?
I'm gonna move on from that.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
That game the first period, though.
All right, Paul, the Village School sale discussion.
So we, um, did get a proposal from Jeff Keeler as we requested at the last meeting, uh, he submitted that. We had it reviewed by legal, um, and the one piece of information that they gave us to pass along was that the warrant article specifically said we would use our open bidding process to sell the building. Had to think about how that might work, um, so we thought they were amenable to this, that perhaps we would open, um, the sale for a period of three months. We say where something offers for three months, the end of three months, we can choose the best offer. Um, and then if, you know, nothing happened during that three months, we don't want it for another three months. So it kind of mimics our bidding process, which is what the article, the warrant article, um, did use. And, um, Jeff and his partner Brenda were fine with doing it that way.
Now, if you did, like, one hit for a guy, we don't have to accept the grant, so all we need is to accept when it comes through the law, until they.
Right, we have the other, right, and, you know, I would, we would have to have Amber, would obviously have to modify our bidding template to fit the sale of a property. Um, and I would have that reviewed by legal as well, for future.
Uh, and then the other piece, um, the attorney did recommend that, um, outside of the sale or whatever process we use, um, that we pursue surveying the land. Um, that if we're gonna take care of that entitlement issue, and even if we sell it, somebody's gonna want everything, um, surveyed on. So, um, we can look for people to get that done, there was one recommendation, and Dan also, he was a person who had done some work for City of Concord, um, and had a great reputation. So, um, we can go ahead and get that done, or we can bring back, um, some options to you, we can take action on, we want multiple quotes for that, just to use.
I would, and then we require to get a quote from them.
It's gonna be, it's probably will cost substantial, there's, there's a lot of boundaries, a lot of properties, it's gonna be, it'd be pretty, pretty hefty, I'd say.
No.
It's not gonna be crazy money, but it's, it's gonna be.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, can we just contract with somebody, do we have to, you know, go to the bidding process to get?
I guess, I don't know, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, that's the problem. If we don't, and then they come back with a ten thousand dollar price, like, we didn't bid.
Josh, any idea?
I, I would say, if we got quotes, we could, we could contact companies and get quotes, and think about. As opposed to going through the formal bidding.
Two or three quotes, I'd deal with. There were not, there were enough surveys, I think, two or three top of my head, right, Concord, so.
And, and I think these types of things, when we do an RFP process, people aren't booking on the internet, you know, surveying companies aren't going, hmm, I wonder if anyone's looking for a surveyor. I'll go on the website and see if there's any RFP, we've much better luck contacting people and asking for it. So we can do that and bring that back next evening. Um, I do need to, um, have you considered the proposal though by, um, Craig and his partner, do you want us to go ahead?
I need Jeff.
This is Craig Keeler. Do you want us to go ahead and do this, have a balance, and ask for the two upfront costs for the two years to pull?
People have, they have a chance to look at it, first of all.
Is this the only point that we have, have we considered anyone else? Because I looked at those rates, and I feel like to do the right thing and make an informed decision, we need more than one option to consider.
Um, we can ask Josh for information, but I know he has contacted people when we were trying to get a commercial estimate done, and people were not interested, um, in, in, um, working with us on that property. I don't know if he's had other conversations anywhere else.
There were a lot more expenses too, I mean, I remember, uh, the agency, you know, had much, much higher upfront engagement.
Just thinking of the evaluation, what was the expense of it?
It was very, I mean, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, it was definitely a bit.
I don't want to say we get it in hometown, it's got, but it's from the, you know, it took the connection, the family or town.
Yeah, I, uh, generally speaking, if, if, but I, I am right on board with you, generally speaking, my sense is that Jeff Keeler has kind of, uh, a good deal here.
There's no date that we have to sign by a certain date, I don't see in here, I don't see how it would hurt anyone to at least, because if there's out there, I'd ask who else may be willing to transact this business for us.
The time, the time restriction that we're gonna have is encumbering this month of this year's, if that's what you're saying, we're gonna encumbering this month of this year's budget.
And moving towards what happens if we're not able to, you know, get that property on the farm? And the concept that we're gonna have to incur when I do it to, if we're still on it in the farm?
It was very, very, well, made, a lot of the farm, but, um, uh, pleasure of the board.
Okay, for clarity, if we can make a motion that we could.
Okay, second, okay, discussion, round, we can, I mean, discuss it, and we can choose to table it, or, you guys, or, or check the, uh, floor. Ben?
Um, I want to try to be vague when I discuss this, because I'm not sure what I can really reveal in public. But what I'm reading is there's an engagement fee, that we will spend no matter what.
Correct.
And then if the transaction is complete, that's where the commission can build the minimum commission.
That's my understanding, but if, if the, if the property sells for less than.
Just for a second, if you are gonna go out and ask for more offers, you absolutely cannot discuss this offer, because you can't give up our information from the other side. Right, so if you want, we can talk about it in non-public, if you want to do that, but we should. I'm trying to dance around.
Yeah.
Do you, do you want to, do we want to discuss with the non-public, so we can take action?
You can, you can approve this one, or talk about in non-public, if you so, either way.
So, yeah, those are the options.
Yeah.
We need to vote, we need to vote on it, or take what? Any other questions, just comments? All in favor of this one?
I'm just trying to check, go ahead, James, I'll give you a take.
Want to speak to you?
You can certainly defeat this motion, and provide publicly that you want us to go out and get more offers, if you're happy to do. But if you end up getting more offers, you don't want to discuss.
Right.
With all this training.
Yeah, I agree, you're absolutely right, absolutely right.
Personally, I'm incorrect, I apologize for that, it seems to me that folks who are here when that presentation was made, um, a couple of comments would be here that they would support play back. Also from, you know, Josh, that, I mean, that, because there's been a, um, a bond strong, that folks willing to, um, take on this project.
I have a question, has there been any attempts to go back and try to negotiate with what the offer is? This is our first time, we have not gone back to ask for any direction, we haven't done this negotiation yet. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
So I'm seeing here anywhere from, well, in our, if they're talking five million, five. They're talking, if you, if you're up to five nine, it's like six percent, if you head, head over, it's four percent. So where we are, you're stepping up the grade, the less league, the lower the value, the higher the commission. Um, because they still have to do the same type of work.
But we're not, we're not, we can't.
I don't know what the, what we're talking about. All I was giving was a range that I found on the Google.
Quick Windows 10, huh?
No, it's Android, it got rid of it. Um, so, you know, stands to reason, we're probably gonna end up in the same range or more. Uh, because, I mean, we're talking six percent.
We're talking, we're talking, James.
We're talking six percent at five million as an industry standard, um, or lower, we're substantially lower than that. So the numbers seem to be well aligned, I would expect even a little bit more, so.
So if we want to discuss anything anymore, that we're gonna do it now.
I think we need, I think we need to move the questions, we have a second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the contract that is, yeah? Paul?
Me.
Do you want? I think you have a lot of support.
If it's a tax, then you're okay with that.
Okay. All right, moving on to policy. We've got, first, first three are sending on first or second reading.
Um, sure, so, yeah, so the, um, the administration of federal grant, grant is on here, um, the required to read on this one, I put the whole packet in, including the notes from the Forward Association. Because it discusses why it's here, and, um, the fact that we had a lot of the, we had to have a food service audit this year, and the regulations are very intensive. And municipal court association, it's a big one, policy just needs to require, um, those food service programs, we need a set of a lot. So that's why that's there, so please read that over, and we will be, obviously, we can customize it a little bit for our district. Um, and then the student, the helping the policy is second for the year, so that will need any action. Um, being a governance of security, again, that is a result of HB sixteen twelve, we have to get that adopted, um, so that's first thing for the year.
So we'll get that done the next year. Yeah, so the third, um, the only thing I would point out would be, um, G D E B D, the staff conduct, that, we're gonna actually review that because that combines the one of us. So we're not wanting to have them go through the hall because that was actually.
Okay, so we're gonna try and take action on G D D, or in staff communication, G B E D, non-certified benefits package, G B E, staff rights and responsibilities, G B E A.
Do you have another one?
Well, I have to. G D D, G B E, D D. Now.
G B E.
G B A, staff rights and responsibilities.
Uh, G B E A, staff ethics.
Yeah, that one's gonna be.
Oh, I thought you said the last one's the next one.
No, it's gonna be combined with staff audit, you think, right? Or am I doing it backwards?
Seven years.
Oh, okay.
That's right.
Next time, yes.
Am I good?
Yes.
I'm good, okay. So we are gonna take up G B E A, staff ethics. We will also take up G C G A, rate of pay for substitutes. We will, okay.
Now?
How about the last one?
Uh, no, and then, yeah, the last one, yes.
J L F, according to expectations, uh.
So was that yes for G C G A, rate of pay?
No, I did.
We're allowed, we're allowed to take that one.
Or the ten, but I just think it may have changed.
And we're not doing high school credit first, then we can move back.
Perfect, yep. So, how many folks would like to take these up? Want to take them up one at a time, which I take them up with a group? How was that, in a five minutes? G D D, boards and staff communications, their motion to approve.
Actually, I have a motion to amend by inserting one paragraph and striking a binten. I can give you a copy of that. Over to our chair.
Do you have a bunch of, of amendments, changes proposed?
You can see, you can see, I'm just passing it to you according to Robert's rules. And here's the to read, one amendment, it's just, okay.
Hang on just a minute.
Okay.
Do you have a series of changes you'd like made to these policies?
It's just this one policy, and then I have a question on another one, okay?
Starting with the board's done, is any changes requested, uh, on policy, sent ahead at the board meeting to Patty, she will incorporate those?
That's not, that is not Robert's rule, is how it works. And additionally, this is public format, if there's amendments to be made, it should be done publicly. If I were to send them privately to our superintendent, the public would not know that, a mint, a request for amendments.
They're, they're providing a format that tracks the changes that are submitted in the documents, and they wouldn't be, they're available at all. And you can modify Robert's rules.
You can modify rules. I'm, I'm saying it jokingly, so, okay. Um, would you like to see these rules? I'm happy to have, have another copy that I can pass around. Okay, do you believe it's worth conversation before we?
Um, yeah, I'm not suggesting we don't have a conversation.
Okay.
Usually they get incorporated in for everybody to see and then review ahead.
Okay.
For discussion at next meeting.
So would you like me to pass around two copies? So our superintendent has one, and then the chair has.
Go ahead.
Historically, and because of what's said, there are a lot of changes that we need to consider. I would need additional time to follow up with Lord only. So I guess that means that we would request a table? Sure, for table this particular policy? If that's okay, I'm totally okay with that.
That's, that's fine.
Um, these policies, we request a legal review, so if, um, there are any changes, I need to get those to be charged and for them to review again, because you already paid your policies review.
Okay, so I have two copies, I'll pass them right around to you guys.
That's fine, I'll keep track of it.
Just for clarification purposes, when I redline changes or something, the board member sends them to me and I, I prepare them and give them to you, as soon as the board sees them, they are subject to write-in mail and the public can ask for copies, um, anytime. So I've had people ask me, you know, for ground policies ahead of time, and I would absolutely do those.
Okay.
Do you want that electronic as well? Are you collecting that?
Do the same.
Electronic?
Do you have a electronic?
I do.
Can you forward that up to, I mean, my?
Both of you?
That would be it, thank you.
I can do that.
Some of the other policies we have to reunite, does everyone, do you need a motion to, to table that one? Or just retail? I think a motion to table G B E.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor of table one?
Mine.
Motion to table. G B E D, non-certified benefits package, motion. Want to accept?
Second.
Second, any questions, comments, concerns regarding? Okay, great. All in favor?
All in.
Post. Okay. Okay, the motion on G B E, staff rights and substitutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, that's fine. Any questions, comments on G B E? And now, all in favor?
Bye.
Um, G B E A, staff ethic, the motion. Want to push, or adopt? Okay, that's okay.
Adopt.
Should, adopt, yeah. Second. Any questions or comments on, um, G B A, yeah?
Um, the question that I have is, was the deletion of G B E B B already made and added to the G B E A that we had to review?
So G B E A that you are reviewing combines staff ethics and conduct?
Okay, thank you.
You're ready? You're off the record?
Uh, just give me one moment, let me do one moment.
Can I modify?
Oh, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, good.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, I just got to one ten, one question.
Sure.
Um, the combination of the two, legal rules, just okay, the combination of which?
Yes, he, um, the changes were from the.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comment?
Well, just for clarification, just speaking of the conditions of, uh, G B E B B, will that fall off the agenda?
The B D is.
Will, will more of it?
Uh, there are not, okay.
Yes?
Um, just a minute, um, I printed off, um, from the Hampshire School Board Association, all the policies required by law, and so just, so that everyone here knows, you can look at it if you'd like yourself, but neither G B E A or G B E B B are required policies. So if that helps answer the question about the legality of them.
Anyone else? Any not in favor of adopting G B E A?
Mine, I.
Post. G B E D, the staff conduct, the recommended inclusion, um, motion. Motion to, the way it's been positive, right? No, we can't.
That's positive, you have to.
Motion to go totally, okay, got it. Second. I'm sorry, I'm gonna check my watch, it never works well. Is it removed, seconded, nine questions, comments, concerns regarding the deletion of G B E D D? Any not in favor?
Mine.
Post. Sorry, we're not gonna do this one.
May I just say something about the next one?
Absolutely.
Um, so rate of pay of substitutes, um, the change that I need to make that has not been on here, and I, I will let you know for special purposes, um, we're proposing that where it says, um, so the, we're using the school board association's sample policy, because the current policy that you have is from nineteen ninety-five and references, um, substitutes working for twenty days, and then set by the school board, that's no longer, you are the school board certified sub from day one, it's not, you don't get twenty-three days of someone who's not a certified teacher. Um, and then, so the, the change that I'm proposing to make on the sample policy is that under substitute pay, it will say, the rate of pay for a substitute shall be set by the executive board. Um, so all the districts will see this policy, and the executive board, um, would set the pay, that way all of our school boards are paying the same amount for substitutes, because we hire them through the S A U office, and they work in the school, so they do one set of fingerprints, um, they can work in any of our schools. That's why we put that change, so that will, I'll, I'll make that change on the sample.
I used one here, that's all. I didn't know, what can it be?
Yeah, no, um, just a point of clarity, um, as far as paying substitutes, we just, even though it's through the S A U, we pay on a usage basis.
That's right.
The usage fee basis.
That's right, we process them through K F A, but honorable pay for whatever stuff they need.
Okay, so we'll set aside some money for it, but if we don't use it.
That's right.
Are we discussing G C G A?
G C.
That's the one I was referring to. Yeah, okay, could I just add some information to that? Um, G C G A is also not a policy that's required for the Hampshire School Board Association, just some informational information.
We don't need to take action on that tonight, so, I'll get one to change, I don't want to incorporate that. All right, last one we have, leaving is J L F, reporting to Spitting Child News.
May I just mention again, when, no, we're not taking action? The chair will be why some of you judge it?
I M B D?
Yeah.
If I take action on J L F first? It's my way here?
I'm going upset at you.
I hope so. I have a motion. Motion to approve, or adopt. Second. Questions, comments on J L F? Do you not know, all in favor?
Mine.
Post. All right, okay.
Sorry, my stack is also very volatile. Um, so on I M B D, the reason that that's been rejected is that when we approved it, we weren't in competency base, and it shows proficiency as an age five or higher, so it will be changed after.
Right.
So that will be the language that we'll be recommending.
If we have suggestions or comments about, um, the ones that we're not taking action on today, should we just send those to Patty?
Patty, she'll, 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 she'll.
What I just, we do is when it's clear, when I give them to the board, I'll put, you know, I'll track the changes, and it will be language, and sometimes they even say, well, that's going to be edited.
Okay. Yeah, some of them are just typos, and they're, some of them.
That way everybody gets it and sees it, and for discussion, and if you've had a chance to do that.
Okay, but, but like, like you said, if those are being, in the tracks, that's gonna be available to everyone. So, um, people can track, you know, kind of how we got from point A to point B, if we do a ton of changes, they should be able to, you know, look at all that arrangements for that government stuff.
Okay, thank you.
You want? All right, I think that is all, all issues. We, no, 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 that's, that's good news. All right, information, I need to, we have.
Yes, um, I brought one off, actually, um, sorry, hand me one. Um, Kathy did your schedule for next year, and is hoping to publish this, if it looks okay, unless everybody had any concerns, I think we pretty much kept it the same as it is this year, this year with two feds, um, with the exception of changing the start time to six o'clock. And, um, a couple of times, I think we had to change the night, like during budget season, and we know there are budget meetings here, and such, um, one-year meetings is on a Monday, and then I think it's going on a Thursday, or that's the possible budget carry. So there's a couple on Mondays in, um, December and July.
Do I get a motion to approve? I will get back to it, I promise. Data motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I will not be able to participate at six P M. meetings, because I have children, and as a mother, I have to wait, and I have to be at home, I work super an hour late. So I'm really, to get here at six thirty is probably the best I can do.
And we had, she had this discussion about July, so. Any objections, they even click there? That's fine.
Thank you.
No problem. You have one last question that we need to do.
Oh, thank you.
Clear that way, go ahead.
Um, and then I, I just had more curiosity questions about why some of the dates were Monday dates instead of Tuesdays. Um, there's one in December, uh, one in January, and I know that's a fall in the same date that the selectmen typically have their meeting.
So we have, um, an S A U calendar to manage, so we have five school districts and, um, five budget committee meetings that we have to work around, so we have to make sure that none of those dates conflict. And on, um, Tuesdays, there are a couple of Tuesdays in, during budget season, at the Deerfield M V C meeting, and our presence is required at that meeting, so we have to change the date from Monday on those two days, otherwise we wouldn't have, um, S A U representation.
Okay, thank you.
Um, just, that's why I will, I will not be able to, the January twenty-first, I'm on the issue.
Sure.
I will. You want, want to leave it up to me? I'm sure, I'm really confident of doing this meeting. So if there's not opportunity to make changes, then I'll have the testing we do, but anyone has any issue to be?
And then a question, uh, goal setting, does that mean that's going to be the purpose of the June ninth meeting, or that will be another meeting to be?
That will be.
That will be, that's that meeting. And we have one, they should have one, to, to.
Yeah.
You have four of the calendar, but there shouldn't be goal setting.
Oh, right, so you could have a meeting June ninth. And then add a goal setting meeting, or like, we can.
Sometimes we just can.
Yeah, sometimes we don't have a lot, to the end of the year, we just have one meeting, and goal setting meeting.
We'll, we'll come back to that, I want to come back to that. Um, can I get your question?
It does, I'm gonna have her, but I can't get anyone else's question.
Okay.
Um, I thought this was a great format, um, because you can just print it off and tape it right by your kitchen calendar, or wherever your calendar is, and I was wondering what's the format, can we post a similar format? Um, so that, you know, it's a lot easier to, you're on one sheet than have to look through the calendar that's on it.
This is up there.
Yeah, she, she, she will.
Well, it's six o'clock now.
Yeah, she'll fix it, but she'll.
Oh, right, this year's is, is up there.
She'll post the sheet, and then we also put things on the, um, on the Google calendar, and the, the difficulty we have is that this will be approved and there may be changes, so we always tell people to look at the updated calendar to make sure there hasn't been a meeting change or a location change. Um, but we try, once we approve, you know, stick to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you can't find, this year's, up there, let me know, because it was up there one time.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
What else? Uh, good, okay, all in favor of the school board meeting that was, or not?
What did you change?
Yeah, that's what I did.
Yeah.
And.
Good? Yeah, I'll give, I'll give her both, all in favor? Goal setting, you got goal setting in the meeting?
That's with me. Um, for this year.
That's true.
I know, who's looking at?
Uh, I'll go, I'll get on here, ask them, we're, we're. But we may need to do some goal setting.
What do you know about the meeting? Um.
I guess we could see how much is on the agenda, if you don't have a long agenda, we could start, we could start with, you know, four weeks down here.
Never ever finished the goals last year.
Right.
Where the big L U, and then we got that, decided that, whatever, we got, we got, we needed to get that to ship.
So typically, and that meeting was the June fourth. No, but I, yeah, I wanna say, I don't.
It's really the second and fourth.
Yeah, second and fourth.
So according to the, their published calendar, um, I don't know, that's just, I forget I said anything.
Search for the, this year, if you got one.
John, can you pull up this calendar? My calendar says you have a meeting in the, I mean.
Right, that, that is the paper that they were looking at, that should be there for this year.
Or.
I'll have the calendar, you know.
Um, do we have a second June? Do we just have the one in June?
Yeah.
So we're off in July, we have two in August.
I suppose we do many, we have one. We have one, but we sometimes needed.
Yeah.
Do you want to do the goal setting in first August? We can, we could do, we could.
That's what we did last year, and I thought we got here. That's what we did last year, and I thought we got here.
We can, well, we can start the goal at the next meeting, and get as much done as we can, and then bring maybe the final language, you go, you don't have...
No, I, I didn't intend that.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, we need to, we need to do that, but then probably next year.
Uh, and then, would you like the administration present? In time, Japan, perhaps you have.
Well, we need a board. Uh, we, we link the whole board, we encourage not having administration presence, and only, the idea there was that they were our goal, and they were not. They weren't, the administration's goal could have adopted. But for many years previous, to public lap, we afford, we worked with administration to develop goals, joint goals essentially, for the upcoming year. So we can, we can do this however folks want, we'd like.
Could, could we plan to do that meeting on our own, but if there are particular items of the administration concerned about, like...
My only thought is that you, they won't know ahead of time what you're gonna talk about, and vice versa, so if you're starting to work on goals, especially for you members, you know, you may be writing a goal that is in conflict with the way we do something in a school, and it would be nice to have someone here to have that, at least have that conversation with you, or to participate in that conversation. Um, I don't know, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what topics you're gonna...
Yeah, if the whole board...
It's hard to, it's hard to know.
It's really, really hard, you know, this may, very long interview session.
And that's why I'm thinking that we're, I mean, we'll put out the big ideas, assuming at the next meeting, but I think it's overly optimistic, just to lay down, you know, it's him. And we're just running through a regular agenda, trying to flush out goals that we can all agree.
We used to do goals.
We always did.
At, at the S A U, we used to do, open to the public, we used to sit in conference room, and do goals. That would be agenda.
I will try to do that as much as possible for the next year.
Kind of that one.
Yeah, I mean, we may have a staff remuneration, um, a couple hires, but other than that, the handbook you've already gone through, it'll be a low...
Just a lightning nail.
Nine fifteen.
At least he's got a file on sale.
We could try and make next meeting a goal setting meeting, do, do we think that it's valuable to have principal there for the first one? Or should we?
I think, yeah.
Go set, build some big, big boxes, go safely, because all the attempt always been one of them. No? Maybe, maybe get some big picture items, and then maybe bring principal in for a second meeting, whether it's in August or a second one in June. I don't think anybody wants to do it in July, if we're avoiding it.
So are you talking about doing the, the goal at the next June meeting?
That would be...
The last, the last.
That would be, I mean...
We're coming up with a topic, are we?
Talking point, yeah, the, the overarching areas we'd like to...
All right, yeah.
That would work pretty well. Did you have a lot, or do you think?
No, that's it.
I did seven public comments, any members of public like to speak? Mark, you're shot.
You're welcome.
Three, nine. Uh, four doesn't need for non-public session, and we have J R S A ninety-one dash eight, forty-three, seven, four, two, D and C on roll call though, April.
Yes.
With G?
Yes.
Back. We don't need any more. Have a good night, folks. What about Josh? He looks like he liked the paper a lot. Nine forty. Got a motion to feel made from the non-public session. Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, all in favor?
I. I'd like to not make personal comments, or a P A teacher?
Your motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
I.
Any other business board?
That's it.
A motion again?
Second?
Second? Oh, yeah, all in favor?
I.
Have a good night.
In the three months.
That's good. On your Monday.